We're going to lead our legislative caucus before we formally call the special legislative session to order. So I'll call it to order following this caucus. Mr. Truesdale will lead us in roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Vice President Green, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Jones. We do not have any communications for tonight. We will then open the floor for courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on April 9th, 2024. Then we will have reports of committees. You will hear the following reports. I will deliver the report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session that occurred on April 16th, 2024. Then Vice President Green will share a report on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024. Then Chair Jones will share a report on behalf of the Public Safety Committee on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024. Chair Ross will share a report on behalf of the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024. And Councilman Rodriguez is absent this evening. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution 21 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Resolution 22 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Resolution 23 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Resolution 24 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Resolution 25 of 2024. We are going to table that resolution. The request was made by Councilwoman Daniels, our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, to add this resolution to our May 14th legislative session agenda. Resolution 26 of 2024. We will suspend the rules for discussion, and then we will vote upon this resolution. Is there any old business? Okay, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn.
I'm sorry, I do have some new business. Yes, sorry, I was looking at something. I would like to just speak about some things happening in Harrisburg this weekend.
Any other new business? Okay. Good evening again, the time is 6:07 PM. I would like to call our special legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rolls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
Present. Please note for the meeting record that both Councilwoman Daniels and Councilman Rodriguez are excused this evening. The invocation will be led by Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. If we could take a moment to keep the family of Ms. Becky Beamer Hicks in our thoughts and prayers, as well as all those in the city of Harrisburg who has lost someone, I know if we could also pay our respects to the fallen K-9 officer, Zeke. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones.
President, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under the principle of liberty and justice.
Thank you, Vice President Green and Councilman Jones. We do not have any communications this evening. We will move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. Now I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, Council. Brian Keisling, Midtown. I didn't intend to come here tonight, but I come in peace and in good faith to bring something to your attention that mutually impacts the Harrisburg Palestine Coalition and you, the Harrisburg City Council as a body. You may or may not be aware that yesterday afternoon, David Cohen, President and CEO of the Jewish Federation of Greater Harrisburg, sent out an email in which he addressed a wide range of pro-Palestine activities that are taking place in Harrisburg and the surrounding communities. Setting aside the overarching dishonesty and racism of his email, there are some things he said that you should be made aware of as they directly affect you and the work you do. First, Mr. Cohen's email claims that he is, quote, "in active conversation with the city and city solicitor," unquote, regarding efforts to prevent the Harrisburg Palestine Coalition from engaging in legal permitted activities in violation of our First Amendment rights. As you are surely aware, the city is already currently being sued by the ACLU over First and Fourteenth Amendment violations on another matter. If what Mr. Cohen suggests is true, and the city solicitor or other officials are engaged in activities that will further violate the constitutional rights of Harrisburg residents, this council should be made aware of that as you have a duty to intervene to protect the rights of your residents and protect our city from opening itself up to additional costly lawsuits. I don't want my hard-earned tax dollars to be wasted on lawsuits where my own rights were violated. I'd rather my rights not be violated and my tax dollars go to addressing the very real problems our city faces. Second, Mr. Cohen's email contains a section that specifically pertains to the ceasefire resolution HPC presented to this council. And in it, Mr. Cohen takes it upon himself to speak on your behalf, stating what council does or does not support and what council will or will not do. To my knowledge, Mr. Cohen is not the designated spokesman of the Harrisburg City Council, especially given that this council has never made a public statement regarding your intentions to bring this resolution forward or not. Mr. Cohen's email is a brazen admission of his own efforts to have our resolution killed behind the scenes undemocratically. I don't think I need to explain how this looks to members of the public. The CEO of an organization confidently assuring his stakeholders of his influence over local politics sends an alarming message to our Harrisburg community. Because, to be clear, that is what he's doing. It should never have needed to be said, but since he lived in Boston less than a year ago and is new here, Mr. Cohen may not be aware that the Jewish community in central PA is significantly more diverse than just the Jewish Federation. And the proud, active Jewish contingent of the Harrisburg Palestine Coalition rejects any suggestion that he speaks for us. He is not our community leader. He is the president and CEO of one organization, an organization that has alienated much of the Jewish community over this very issue. So he doesn't speak for me, but he also seems to think that he speaks for you. And without the transparency on our resolution that HPC has been asking for, we won't really be able to know for sure if he does. We have other council initiatives that would be of value to this city, but we need to know if we're actually working with this council or if we're really going up against the mayor, solicitor, and Mr. Cohen operating behind the facade of council. So that's all. I'm not going to ask you for anything tonight or take more of your time. I know the long night you had last night, and I don't intend to drag this out for you any longer for a second night in a row. I do want to respect your time, but I'm here to protect HPC because Mr. Cohen's actions are an escalation that directly targets us and puts our community's safety at risk. And I'm also here in the interest of protecting you because however HPC and council's relationship may sometimes appear, the Harrisburg Palestine Coalition cares deeply about the city of Harrisburg and our collective community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one. We will move forward with the agenda as printed. Next, we have approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on April 9th, 2024. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committee. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024. On Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, the Administration Committee met to receive one quarterly report and one resolution. Mr. Carl Singleton, Director of the Office of Equity and Compliance, was present to share the first quarter report for 2024. Highlights included the following. The Mayor's Equity Roundtable Small Work Group is preparing to deliver policy language to be considered by Mayor Williams and Harrisburg City Council by the end of April. Mr. Singleton participated in the Visit Hershey-Harrisburg DEI Listening Session. 2024 Annual Goals Were Discussed. Monthly data showing new business applications from the Mercantile and Tax Office have been shared. Council members asked questions regarding local participation, timeline for legislation, meeting attendance on current projects, master format language, educational opportunities for small and minority-owned businesses, and DBE certification clarification. Resolution 21 of 2024 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with revised software systems for the purpose of redesigning, upgrading, and hosting the website for the city of Harrisburg. Mr. Matt Maisel, Communications Director, Ms. Hillary Green, Procurement Services, and Mr. Nathan Grunbein, Deputy Director of the Bureau of Information Technology, were present on behalf of the administration. Mr. Maisel noted that Mr. Jason Graves, the LERTA Administrator, Business Development, worked diligently on the work group but was unable to participate in the meeting. Mr. Maisel shared that exploration for a website redesign began in August of 2023 due to slow update speeds and a lack of accessibility. The focus of the website redesign is to create a sleek design with mobile accessibility. There were a total of 32 businesses that responded to the RFP. Fifteen moved on to the second round, seven moved to an interview process. Revised software systems was unanimously supported by the group. Council members asked questions clarifying revised's location, technical support, timeline clarification, web design and hosting capabilities, security issues and breaches, current website design and cost, security, redesign approval, and website efficiency. Thomas Jean, owner of Revised Software Systems, shared those various, that there are various approvals needed for the redesign. There's a 50% chance that the redesign will be completed by September. Completion of the redesign is more likely or more realistic to occur during the fourth quarter of the year. Mr. Grunbein shared that the design and coding will be handled by revised. Security standards meet the city's capabilities and are of no concern. The current website was designed by Gavin, a Lancaster-based company, and the cost is unknown. The last website redesign occurred in 2018. I encourage my colleagues to support Resolution 21 of 2024 to improve the accessibility and user-friendly nature of the city's website for residents and members of the public. This concludes the Administration Committee report. Next, you will hear from Vice President Green on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. During the Work Session of April 16th of 2024, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolution 24 of 2024, which is a resolution approving the third proposed 2024 budget reallocation in order to appropriate certain monies locally designated as revenue replacement funding through an award under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide for specified projects. During this discussion, the main focus was about the pools in the city. There was a request for $2 million, excuse me, $1,945,000 to be spent towards the South Harrisburg Pool in order to start Phase One of the project, which consists of groundwork, demo, soil testing to see if it was an adequate site, as well as design development for the project. $55,000 was to be allocated towards the Jackson Lake Pool for pool repairs to ensure the pool could open up for this year. And then there was $6 million that would be earmarked into a special fund to ensure that was available for a South Harrisburg Pool project. In the discussion, council members asked questions about what would be done with the Jackson Lake Pool, how it would make it available for this year, what the repairs consisted of. And the administration kind of went over what it would include expansion joints to make sure that there were no leaks in the pool, reepoxing the bottom of the pool, repainting some of the gutters, redoing the pool bathhouses to ensure that they were adequate for our residents, and possibly redoing the concession facilities. In the discussion, I think council members made it clear that although we support Jackson Lake Pool opening for this year so that our residents could have a pool, our kids could have a pool inside the city they could go to, we were interested in looking for other funding sources so that we didn't start pulling from money that was allocated towards the South Harrisburg Pool, especially given that the funds that are there already might not be adequate enough. I did have a discussion with the administration. The mayor did come to the meeting at the end of the meeting yesterday, and she expressed her thoughts on the project itself and the need for the pool to open up. I did meet with the administration, including the mayor, the business administrator, and members of Parks and Recreation today, just trying to figure out where we could come up with some of the other funds from. And I think we have come up with a solution in order to pull funds from the Capu Project line for a Capu Project for roadwork that won't be completed this year because some things need to be done with PennDOT beforehand. So hopefully that's a concession we can agree to together in order to pull the $55,000 from a line item that's not going to be utilized this year, rather than pulling it from ARPA funds that we look to airmark so that the South Harrisburg Pool can be completed. That's an amendment I will bring forth when it's time for Resolution 24 of 2024 to be discussed. And we'll be able to discuss it more during that time, and I would ask for my council member's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The next report you will hear will be delivered by Chair Jones, the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024.
Thank you, President Bowers. So first, I will start with my report of the Harrisburg Borough Police. On April 16th, 2024, the Public Safety Committee Work Session was held. We discussed the quarterly reports of the Harrisburg Borough Police. The summary of the session was the report's goals and the year-to-date spend of the CID, CSD, and the UPD. Present to discuss was Captain Thomas McGarity of the Technical Services Division, Commissioner Thomas Carter, Captain Russell Winder, Mr. Angelo Craig, and Deputy Chief Young. They discussed the vice statistics, noting that 49 cases were assigned, seizing 60.25 ounces of cocaine, 78.75 ounces of crack cocaine, 21,550 in U.S. currency. They also served 16 search warrants. Thirteen arrests were made. Also, there were 151 juvenile cases assigned. The Community Service Division responded to 127 calls and issued eight citations. Also discussed with the CSAs, they handled 172 calls for service, all in the first quarter. They attended eight community events. The Borough Police were able to take 51 ghost guns off the street and 43 manufactured guns off the street. The TSD Division had a borough-wide training on use of force, towed vehicles, and defense tactics. The Uniformed Police Division took in 18,883 calls for service and recovered 27 firearms. Questions asked by council. I asked for an update on sidewalk parking enforcement. I asked of the 7,765 tickets that were issued on the side, which were, which of them were sidewalk parking, for sidewalk parking? At the time, there is no way that they can break that number down, noting that all tickets written are violations, not just sidewalk violations. Council also asked about the status of the GVI grant. In response, more resources are being gathered, more partners, all working toward the first initial call-in. Commissioner Carter made council aware that he plans to have a gun buyback initiative with Mr. Elby. He also stated that his officers were able to save four lives using Narcan. And that will end the report for the Borough of Police. I will go on to the Borough of Codes. On April 16th, 2024, the Public Safety Committee Work Session was held with the Borough of Codes on their quarterly reports. The summary of the session was the reports of their goals and their year-to-date spend in the first quarter of 2024. Present to discuss the reports were Director Anne Montgomery. She discussed the scope of work for Codes. Also reported that there were nine properties lifted out of condemnation via the progressive inspections. There were 501 permits issued, 375 public complaints, and 284 violations submitted. 330 citations issued, and 84 hours of court hearings that were logged, all in the first quarter. She also shared that the goal in 2024 was to demo 30 properties, and six of them were done in the first quarter. Also, out of the $67,750 appropriated for their budget in the first quarter, their year-to-date spend is $7,223.28, which leaves a balance of $58,526.72. Questions that were asked, I asked Codes, could they assist in the parking violation happening with the vehicles parked completely on the parcels? In response to, in response, Director Montgomery responded yes, and that two Code officers were assigned to North 17th Street, where the officers will be placing door hangers notifications to remove the cars within two days. After that, citations will be written, and an additional Code officer will inspect the North 18th Street area and Holly Street. It was further communicated that if Codes sees any cars on the sidewalk, they will notify Police Officer Justin Wells. And there were no questions asked by my colleagues. I mean, there were no further questions asked by my colleagues, and that ends the report of the Borough of Codes. I will move on to the Borough of Fire. On April 26th, I mean, April 16th, 2024, the Public Safety Committee Work Session was held. We discussed the quarterly reports from the Borough of Fire. The summary of the session was the first quarter reports and goals and year-to-date spend. Present to discuss was Chief Ryan Enerline. Chief Enerline shared a breakdown of the major incident types, sharing that there was 16.41% good intent calls, 25.87% false alarm and false calls, 6.23% of fires, and 28.86% resulted, I mean, of rescue and emergency calls. In the month of January, there were 301 incidents, 252 in February, and 282 in March. As for the year-to-date spend with a budget of $7,274,783.43, the year-to-date spend is $1,847,152.38, which would leave a balance of $5,427,631.5, which equals 25.4% use of that budget. We also spoke about the three firefighters that retired. Also informed council that the first quarter, that there was one loss of life. Council had no questions for Chief Enerline, and that concludes my report for the Borough of Fire. Now I will conclude with a public health report. On April 16th, 2024, the Public Safety Committee Work Session was held on the quarterly reports of the Health Department. Summary of this session, the reports were on the goals and vacancies and community engagement. Present to discuss was Director Nelva Wright. We discussed the training opportunities that are being identified for 2024. The Health Office was invited to present at the Transitional Research Cancer Center Consortium in March. Also reported was there was 27 general inspections, five new business inspections, eight progressive inspections, and five public complaint inspections, and 10 special event inspections, all in the first quarter. There is a one-part-time inspector position open as of April 5th of 2024. Nine applicants applied, and five interviews are scheduled. There's also an updated health license application now available in Spanish. There were also no questions from my council members, and that also concludes the report of public health.
Thank you. The next report you will hear will be delivered by Chair Ross on behalf of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee on the Work Session of April 16th, 2024. Chair Ross?
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, everybody here in person and online. On April 16th, 2024, the Parks and Recreation and Enrichment Committee convened to address Resolution 22 of 2024, which is a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of developing a natural greenscape park to be known as the Swatera Street Park. Mr. Kevin Saunders, the Parks and Recreation Manager, shared a comprehensive overview of the proposed project. Project Partners Shar, Alex Riva, and George Payne elaborated on the Park Greenscape Space Initiative planned for Swatera Street in the South Allison Hill neighborhood. The partners presented a two-phase project covering 10 parcels, with Phase One dedicated to eight parcels and Phase Two to the remaining two parcels. They showcased visual representations comparing the project's envisioned outcome to the current state of the parcels. Key benefits highlighted included natural stress-reducing environments, children's amenities, solar lighting, security features like a police substation, and a focus on creating green spaces and family-friendly activities driven by community preferences. Discussions involved post-completion responsibilities for the city residents and project partners, including maintenance supported by a DCNR grant for five years. Responsibilities such as creating at least one Responsibilities such as creating at least one ADA accessible curb cut and assuming maintenance duties after the initial five-year period were allotted to the city. Community members from groups like the South Allison Hill Homeowners Association Committee, Wild Heart Ministry, and other residents agreed to share upkeep duties on a rotating basis. Council inquiries revolved around parcel coverage, the rationale behind the project's location change, concerns regarding gentrification, and the preference for a MOU over a contract. Members of the Allison Hill community came out and strongly advocated for the Greenspace project, emphasizing its positive influence on providing recreational options for Harrisburg's youth. With robust community backing and acknowledgement of the project's merits, the recommendation is for council members to support Resolution Twenty-two of two thousand twenty-four to advance this community's initiative in Harrisburg. This summarizes the proceedings of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, Chair Rodriguez is absent this evening, but I'll just provide a brief summary report on the work session on behalf of the Public Works Committee that occurred on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Public Works Committee met to consider one resolution, Resolution Twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-four, which is a resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and appointing Austin Griffin, Deputy Director of Public Works, as the City of Harrisburg's designee to execute any forms, documents, contracts, and reimbursement agreements in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's electronic engineering and construction management system and reimbursement agreement system. Mr. Griffin was present last night, and he shared that due to the absence of Mr. Daniel Snow, our city engineer, this would provide and ensure that the Department of Public Works had access to PennDOT's electronic engineering and construction management system, and would be helpful as they peruse different projects to determine the status. So that concludes the brief report for the Public Works Committee. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution Twenty-One of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-One, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Revise Software Systems for the purpose of redesigning, upgrading, and hosting the website for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-One of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-One, two thousand twenty-four passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of developing a natural greenscape park to be known as the Swatera Street Park.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four passes by a vote of four to one.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and appointing Austin Griffin, Deputy Director of Public Works, as the City of Harrisburg's designee to execute any forms, documents, contracts, and reimbursement agreements in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's electronic engineering and construction management system and reimbursement agreement system.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record? Oh, that's right. Impeccable timing. So this is Resolution Twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-four, as amended.
A resolution approving the third proposed two thousand twenty-four budget reallocation in order to appropriate certain monies locally designated as revenue replacement funding through an award under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide for specific projects.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. I guess, I kind of went over it in my report that I would be making a motion to amend this resolution so that the money for the Jackson Lake repairs would come out of a general fund reallocation, coming out of a line item for road project that will not be completed this year because the project is at a standstill until PennDOT does the pre-work they need to do. So I guess, it looks like we have the finance team here that maybe can go over the numbers a little better, kind of to, to show where the funds are coming from. In the back of the amended resolution, there is a Schedule D that was added, or Exhibit D, excuse me, that was added that shows which line items the funds will be coming from and how it will impact things. Whenever you're ready. If you could use the microphone, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Bowers. I will have our accounting manager go into the accounting and budgetary details so that, you know, we'll be, I'll dot and explain to you clearly. If you have any questions for he and I, when he's complete, please let us know. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Get situated here, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Thank you, President Bowers, President Green, Vice President Green. The city solicitor distributed early the amended proposed third budget reallocation. It's been amended, I believe, for the second time now. My, the main focus there, as you've gone over a good summary ahead of me, is Exhibit D. And we became aware of the, of a lessening of the need to fund streets and roads project, projects in the Capital Projects Fund. So the move to enhance the general fund and to enable it to address the fifty-five thousand dollars for Jackson Lake is just a simple budget amendment adjustment, moving from transfers out to capital projects and funding up the particular account pool improvements, also in the general fund and in the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Budget Unit. So that's the fifty-five thousand dollar plus-up. Because it's inter-fund, originally it was appropriated for transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, we have to mirror the adjustment in the Capital Projects Fund by reducing both revenue and expense because that fifty-five thousand dollars is determined to not be needed in cap projects. So that's why you're seeing the corresponding two additional lines for the Capital Projects Fund. Again, that's Exhibit D, and it's footnoted, footnoted A with the brief description.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding this? I'll start to my far left with Councilman Jones.
Sorry. Thank you, Vice President Green. Just only one question. You said that these funds aren't needed anymore? And if they are, what's going to replace this fifty-five?
At the present time, it's been determined that there's just a lessening of a particular streets and roads project. There are several, but it's been determined that the, the, the outlays for two thousand twenty-four won't be at the level that was, represents the original appropriation.
Okay.
But if, if you indicate, if the possibility does develop later in the year that there's a turn of events or a need, we can accordingly come back and readdress that.
Okay. No further questions?
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to first just say, you know, thank you for, Vice President Green, for looking into this diligently today and asking them to do so. But also thank you, Ms. Kelly and Bron for looking into this. And I'm trying to find a way to work this out so that we didn't set a precedent that we are taking money from projects such as the pool that would be going out the south or any other projects that we know are very necessary, but actually trying to find it coming out of other appropriations that, as you said, we don't need, have a need for at the moment and don't see one in the near future. So I just want to thank you both for working on that today. Well, three of you. Every, I want to say you both, but, but all three of you working together. I know last night was a little spicy at the end, but I think it proved to show that we can, we can act as adults and figure things out, even when at first there's a bit of turmoil. So just thank you for all of us coming together and doing that.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Yeah, and it was a collective effort with the team, including budget manager, input from the mayor, and also the business administrator.
Well, I hope they're watching. I'll say thank you to all of them as well.
So I always worry about the numbers, but I appreciate Neil's office being able to handle the intricate legislation adjustments that go along with something like this. So it was a big, big team effort.
It was. Well, thank you, team. Any by miss, I'm so sorry, but yes, thank you, everybody.
And I'm sorry for not recognizing the mayor and Mr. Brooks. I had to do that earlier.
Oh, that's all right. Oh, it was your idea. Okay. It was his. Thank you, Councilman Jones. That's it for me.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions as long as we're confident that the funds won't be needed for our streets and roads. And if that's clear, I'm fine with moving forward. Thank you for the collaboration and communication. I think that both are very much needed, particularly in instances like this one. And I'm glad that we were able to come to some level of compromise. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Vice President Green. I'd just like to say that I'm glad that everything has worked out. It is good to see our teams work together and come to a positive solution for our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to all of my council members just for having the conversation last night and ensuring that we did do our job and we were diligent with looking over everything and keeping our priorities first. Thank you to the mayor and the administration for being willing to have the conversation today so that we could come to this point and work together. I will say I am confident in our finances at this point. And there were several other places we could have pulled the money from. We chose this because I were confident we won't be needing this money this year for this project. But there were other places we could have pulled it from. We could have patched it together. So I do feel confident that if the need would arise to do a road project, we would be able to come up with the money. So thank you very much for everybody. And I think that's all that I have. When it comes time for the actual amendments, I will need help from our solicitor, though. All right.
Okay. So, any further comments, questions on Resolution Twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-four before we return to our legislative session? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to return to the legislative session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So before us, we have Resolution Twenty-four of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record one more time?
Resolution Twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution approving the third proposed two thousand twenty-four budget replacement or reallocation in order to appropriate certain monies locally designated as revenue replacement funding through an award under the American Rescue Plan Act to provide for specified projects.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Thank you. Council members, I'll defer to Vice President Green for her amendment.
I would like to propose an amendment with the assistance of the solicitor.
Because this is not an ordinance but a resolution, it's just very simply the motion to adopt the third budget reallocation as amended as of April the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. I would like to make a resolution to adopt the Resolution Twenty-four of two thousand twenty-four as amended as of April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Council members, any questions, comments, or concerns related to the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
The amendment passes by a vote of five to zero.
Okay. So we're good to go. We don't have to have another vote because it's a resolution as amended. Thank you. Resolution Twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, as we noted during our caucus, has been tabled and will be included on our May fourteenth legislative session agenda. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution Twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Alexander Building Construction Company to serve as the construction manager for the restoration, rehabilitation, and reconstruction of the Broad Street Market's red brick building.
Thank you. Council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I will defer to our Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee Chair to lead the discussion, Chair Rawls.
Thank you very much. So is there anybody here from the administration to talk about Resolution Twenty-six of two thousand twenty-four? And if so, please join us up here at the front.
We'll be right with you. We're grabbing a computer real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, they're getting a computer. Please excuse our brief submission right now. We're just trying to get a few things up and running with the computer. So give us a moment if you are joining us online. And we'll get started shortly. Thank you for your patience.
All right. Let me know when you guys are ready.
We're ready when you are.
Okay. All right. Good evening, City Council. I'd like to, I'd like everyone to introduce themselves at the table here real quick, and then we can start the slideshow. If we can start from my right and then work our way over to the left. Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Nice to see you guys again. Tyrell Davis with Alexander Building Construction, project manager.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Wilt, project executive with Alexander Building Construction.
Good evening. Debbie Rehart, project manager with the Department of Facilities and Special Projects.
All right. Good evening, City Council. My name is David Baker. I'm the facilities director for the City of Harrisburg. Tonight, we'd like to bring to you what I foresee as one of many approvals for the Broad Street Market brick building. This is a, basically a breakdown of our scoring process for the Broad Street Market Construction Manager portion of this project. In front of you, you see a breakdown of the scoring for the construction manager portion of the project. As you can see at the bottom, the totals on the scoring, you see the individuals. Daniel Hartman, our city's business administrator, was one of the individuals. Scott Miller, who is a project manager for the Facilities Department, who has 25 years of experience in the field. And Deborah Rehart, who has over 25 years of experience in project management in this field as well. In the two paragraphs below, you can see some of the, some of the many key features that kind of separated the Alexander Group as far as the construction management firm goes. And I think some of the ones that I noticed were their, you know, their deep understanding and, you know, years of work in the fire restoration field and also doing period-specific rebuilds. Before you, some of the pictures of a few of the different projects that they've completed. And on that note, I'm going to hand this one over to Alexander to kind of give you a synopsis on what it is that they're going to be bringing to the table for the city and what their role is in the project or in the construction manager role that they'll be playing.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to start off by telling you a little bit about Alexander. Alexander lives, works, and plays in the city. We've been in business since 1928 over on Vaughan Street, same location, and have done a lot of the work in the city over the years. We're a construction management firm. We do a lot of interaction with different communities within the Harrisburg area. And we are looking forward to bringing our fire, water, wind, and restoration company to the table to assist in this historical and unique building. It's been a long time coming to actually do some work on this building. I remember as a young child, my grandmother would take me here to buy her products and everything. And it's been just a, just a beautiful, beautiful building back in the day, and we want to take it back to that glory. We will be bringing in a superintendent. The superintendent will be working as a eyes and ears of you, an extension of your services, since we work directly for you and give advice and direction to the prime contractors that are brought on board. We'll direct them through the coordination and communication with the city. We are looking forward to engaging the community. We know there's a lot of PR around this project, and we are looking forward to making sure people are understanding what's going on the way that you want it distributed and sent out to the community. As far as the, the job that we're going to be doing, we will assist with the hiring of the architect and the, and the engineers. We'll make sure that it's vetted properly, working through hand-in-hand with the buildings and grounds folks and making sure that we are able to lay out the best team for the project. Taking a look at our staff, when we looked at this project, we were adamant about putting on the right team to this project. It's a unique job. So we made sure that we have our restoration advisors. We have a project manager that has done this type of work before, and other team members that are really dedicated to filling the team out properly in order for us to make sure that we can perform the best for you on this project. Quality control is a key issue for us. We're going to make sure that it's a quality job that everybody can be proud of. We'll make sure that when we're bringing on contractors that are local to the community, we engage the WBE, MBE, and disadvantaged businesses. We have a large database, and we've worked in concert with many folks in the area that will really help us work towards a common goal. And I think that's pretty much where I'm at with the overall construction. There's many other elements in our proposal, but one thing I would, would highlight, and I don't know that it's been talked about much, but there's insurance monies that are dealt with this project. Our, our fire restoration folks, they deal with insurance carriers all the time. And there are other processes that they're familiar with, with the estimating software, with the, with the understanding what unforeseen items can be actually going back to the insurance company, so it's not a cost to the city. So we're going to take every step we can to make sure that you're getting as much as you possibly can for our services.
All right. On that note, do any members of council have any questions for us?
Thank you. I'm sure we've, a few of us do have some questions. I know the Broad Street Market is a huge undertaking and a loss to the city right now. So we are definitely looking forward to it being rebuilt, not just back to what it was, but even better. I think we're definitely looking forward to that. So I thank you all for coming out tonight and speaking to the, to us about this, about the project. Thank you also for, Director Baker, for putting up how the scoring system went, who was on the team. I know that is something I'm always looking for with the bid process, and so are the residents, to see how construction companies are being picked. I did have a few questions for you and then also for Alexandra and co., and then I will pass it to my council members. My first question for you, Director Baker, was I had noticed that when the bid process went out, one of the qualifications was you were looking for the lowest bid. Now, I didn't see up there what the bids were, but then I did notice that when the bids were finished, Alexandra and co. were the highest bid. So I was just wondering, even though you were, your qualifications were the lowest bid, why did you all decide? And was there a score? My first question was, would be where, was there a score for the, the money bid? Was there a scoring process for that? And if so, what did each bidder get for that score? And when did you change your qualifications for wanting the lowest bid?
All right. So to that question, with this process, this RFP process, we, the city doesn't actually have to go with the lowest bid, the lowest cost for the bid. We try and go with the most responsible bidder to get the most bang for our buck as far as what contractors we go with and what consultants that we go with. And in this process, you know, after the scoring was all said and done, that was what the individuals doing the scoring felt, is that with this particular firm, that we would get the most benefit out of, out of these individuals for the money that we'd be paying. And Alexander was not the highest. I think they were second to highest?
No, they were the highest. They were second. I thought they were the highest. Okay.
So that's confusing. There were actually two Alexanders that were being scored, so.
Okay. I'm sorry. My eyes could have went really quick, you know, once I saw the 984 thou. I could have wandered a little bit.
Right. So that, yeah, hopefully that answers the, does that?
Well, yes, and partial. I know, but I think my confusion comes with if, and I would be confused if I was put in a bid if the qualification says we're looking for the lowest bid, but then that kind of comes off the table when you end up picking a company. You didn't really pick the company that, that had the lowest bid, because maybe as you're going through figures, you're trying to get it as low as possible. But then you actually aren't looking for that when everything is said and done. So I think that as we're putting out bids, making sure we stick to what we ask for, and our scoring process reflects that, because that wasn't part of a score, was it? Like, you know, how much the bid came in as? That was, I didn't see that the fee was part of it. Okay. That was, that's my question. I didn't, can you go back to that slide?
And Madam Chair, to be a lawyer for a second.
Please do.
A request for proposal is different than a bid. Okay?
Okay.
And so request for a proposal is a proposal which has many factors into including qualifications,
what you're going to do.
numbers, what the plan is. There's, and it's just, it's not the same rules.
You're talking about the submission of the proposal?
No, the whole thing is it starts, it starts as a, as a request for proposal.
I know the RFP.
Whereas a bid has a different legal structure to it, right? Even a bid is not required in Pennsylvania to be the lowest bid. It's the lowest responsible bid based on the bid package put out, you know? And so, and so you look at the, you look, if you say, and we'll take it out of this thing. Like, let's say you're, you're doing a road work, and part of it is we are, we are a new road company. We've never done any road work, and we don't have a bond that has to come with it. I mean, there's a lot of little things that come in it, and I didn't do this one. I'm just, I'm, but there is a lot of nuance when you're doing these, and there's, some of them are checkboxes, right? You got to have this, like, remember the incinerator, there was no bond. You got to have, you got to have your performance bond. You got to have your payment bond. Different things come into these. But there's also other, in most of these, you have a list of things you have to have in terms of conditions. And some of them are the qualifications of, of the different professionals in it. Some of them are the, sticking with the categories that were there. Some are having experience doing certain things. I mean, but, so everyone is sort of unique to our project, and that's just not Harrisburg. You take the project and you, and they try to write up something that covers the actual project that's trying to get done. But they are different. And so that, that's, and so to drill into it, you really drill into the whole RFP packet, like, not just the one piece. It's a, it's a pretty thick packet that went out the door.
Yeah, I, I do understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure we're clearing what we ask. Companies are what we're saying the qualifications are, because that is how they, I would, would think, create their proposal round. This is what they're looking for. And that's all I'm saying. I just want to say be clear and be concise, and then keep that same requirement as you go through the process, because that would only be fair. That's, that's my only point in that. If I'm not clearing what I'm saying, please let me know. But I just wanted to, I was just saying it felt like we switched it up once the bids came in or the RFPs came in. That's.
I understand. If we switched it, I'm unaware of that.
Okay. It just, it just seemed that way to me. Like, I thought it was saying, you know, we're kind of looking for the, the lowest bid, but, or the lowest RFP, but that's not really what it was.
That's what, well, if it was a bid, it's still, it's still responsible bid. It's not lowest.
Okay. So lowest responsible.
To do the project as proposed, like, you know, there is some knowledge. When you put the bid package together, it's going to require this much time, this many people. And if, if a number doesn't hit that number, we've had that, for example, with lawn cutting, like, where someone comes in and their bid couldn't cover the gallon of gas for each lawn they were cutting, you know? So how are you going to do this, you know? But it's, it's, it's usually comes up a lot in procurement.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also, I, I think my other thing, my other question was going towards a WBE participation. I know that, I think on your application, you said you don't participate. And.
We always participate.
Okay.
Always. We actually have a mentor-foretage program. We're very active on all our jobs. Not a requirement or, you know, a, a set, a set amount. We don't, we don't go by that. We go by going out to all our, our contractors and, and just saturating the market. I mean, that's what we do. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of people in our database that it's just a good, it's a good process that we've always had, and we will get, you know, a lot of participation. We always do.
Tyrell didn't seem too impressed with that answer. No. He was like, no. I'm going to move on. I have other questions, but I'm going to let my council members go. I don't like to be greedy. So I want them to ask some questions, too. So I'm going to start on my far left with Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, how are you guys today? My question is going to start out with you, Mr. Baker. So these numbers up here, what do they mean?
So we have multiple categories that everything is graded off of. There's a slew of different categories, the whole packet that the, the grading team will go through. So each different category, they'll go across and they'll grade from that specific category for every single RFP that they read. So let's say you get a 30-page RFP. They read every page of the RFP. They go through on these, you know, every single line on the scoring sheet, and then they score each individual RFP on every single line. And then all those lines, they add up, you know, get in a room together. They all go over their different scoring numbers. And then these are the end results for all the scoring that's done for every single RFP that comes in, and they read and go over.
Okay.
So this is like the, the end result, the tabulation, after all the math problems have been done, and this is the end result for that, that tabulation.
Okay. What do they mean?
So each category, and I mean, we could, I don't know.
Just give me an example, because I'm just, all I'm seeing is like numbers. I'm just seeing numbers. I don't know what these numbers mean. Some numbers are high, some numbers are low. I don't know what they mean.
Right. So what we did is we set up a scoring matrix, and let's listen to seven categories that we score.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. Several categories that we score on. So for example, the first one is plan, purpose, objectives, and challenges. So what we're looking for is the proposal, the contractor's proposal of how well they understand what we're looking for. That's one, we score on that. Another criteria is the team qualifications and experience. If they have the correct experience, the right people assigned to the team, and we grade proposals on that. We also had a criteria on this particular one because we wanted to make sure that the construction manager had his staff, or their staff, excuse me, on site every day to make sure that things are going where they should be. So we scored on that. If they, if they address that in the proposal, then they got a certain amount of points.
Yeah, I would, you know, again, Mr. Baker, what I would love to do for me, to let me have a better understanding of how you're selecting these individuals. And no disrespect to your company. You guys seem to have been around for a very long time. But this is like, for me, is my second time seeing you guys in front of me. And is that based on, is that, does any of these numbers represent the level of their experience or how many years they've been in business? Does any of these numbers up here represent that?
Yes, we, one of the criteria...
Is it a main factor? Let me ask it that way.
So every single one of these factors are weighted in their own regard. And one of the factors is how much experience they have in this specific type of restoration project. And that, that's a big determination on, on who we move forward with. So that is one of the grading criteria that we look for is the, this exact type of restoration work and how much experience they have and the ability they have to do what we need them to do in our specific case.
Okay, so I'm gonna say this. I'm gonna look at J E M, right? Is that 22 points off? And the bid was maybe $400,000 cheaper? Why weren't they selected?
So we've always just gone by the point system on here as far as, and I shouldn't just say that. The point system is a huge factor, but also you expect to see a certain amount of money for the services rendered. And if the number is completely out of the park, either above or below what you're expecting to see what industry standards are, that is a factor that you take into account whenever you're doing the grading as well.
So you're saying that there's a concern if it doesn't meet the threshold that you would think that amount of money that it would take to get this project done? What about the, the level of experience? Because if we're just now, what I'm asking for is specifically the numbers. I said they're 400,000 short than what their bid was, right?
Right.
Okay, so if you're looking at that, that number, that lower number, doesn't have anything to do with their experience. Maybe they may know how to do this work. Did they, so let me just say this. This is what I would like to see before I vote on this. I would like to see the RFPs that were out there. And then I want to sit with you and show me how you grade this. That's, that's what I would like to see.
So we can do that?
Alright, no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. President Bowers, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. My first question is, I wanted to know how the team was assembled that reviewed the RFPs that were received?
So we try and keep an odd number of individuals on the grading sheet so we don't have any sort of, you know, ties and anything. And in this case, we took individuals that all had institutional knowledge in the area that we'd be grading in.
It seems, this has been a recurring question with Mr. Singleton, the Director of Equity and Compliance. His involvement in Broad Street Market meetings generally. But it seems like in this instance, he should have been included in some iteration of the odd number of individuals assembled for this team. Was a pre-proposal meeting held?
Yes.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Yes.
When was it held?
I don't remember the date. It's generally about three weeks after the...
Well, do you know how many people or how many companies were present?
There were four. It's a required walkthrough.
I would like more clarification on the scoring rubric and what's included. I think that you, you mentioned maybe three areas, but I didn't hear seven. And what is the scale for the rubric?
Two, 100. 100 points total.
Would you like us to read each individual grading?
I would like to know or see it or something, because you... Okay, thank you.
I'll read them.
Yes.
Plan, purpose, goals, objectives, and challenges is the first criteria. That was allotted 10 points. Team qualifications or experience was allotted 15 points. Firm indicates willingness to have staff on site daily was allotted five points. Firm prior experience with restoration of historical structures was allotted 10 points. The proposed construction manager background, education, knowledge, and skills was allotted 10 points. Project schedule, just ensuring that it's detailed and comprehensive and reasonable, that's 15 points. Project budget was allotted 10 points. The fee was allotted 20 points.
Say fee.
The fee that they were, would be charging. And the quality of the proposal response was five.
So the only thing, how many...
Go ahead, go ahead. I was still writing. Go ahead.
Alright, I think the only way that we could actually see how this, I mean, I could hear all of those things. Now, we have to see, well, again, I would love to see the RFPs and then compare them.
If council members want to sit down and walk through all of them, I mean, I don't think...
How many of them were submitted?
Four. I'm not...
Yeah, I want to see them.
I think, I talked with the mayor's office. They have no issue of setting up a time and taking people and walking through the whole thing.
Absolutely.
And so, and I, and I think that's a fair way to, people to look at it. It is a detail-oriented thing. It's a lot of data, a lot of information, and you can see the whole flow of it, like...
Right. I mean, I'm familiar with RFPs look like, but I'm saying, understanding this scaling and this grading system. I mean, for council, when, when you bring these projects or these, yeah, projects to council, all we see is this. We don't really get to see, so we're very concerned about...
This goes back to where I started earlier, the difference. When there's bids, you don't ever see, you never see the bid, because the bid...
Absolutely.
Because the bid is picked by, by the way the law works. So RFPs come back to you because there's this other component to them, right? But I would suggest if council members want to do that, the most efficient may have like two people at a time if you want to do it.
Right, because you can't have more than one.
Because scheduling everybody one at a time will take a lot of hours.
However, we gotta do it, Neil. We want to see it.
But that, well, I talked to the mayor today. I talked to Mr. Hartman, and that was what I got coming out of that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Did anybody determine when the pre-proposal meeting was held?
March the 12th.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, just a comment. I just, I'm not sure how equitable this process was. So I don't know if us reviewing the RFPs at this point, if there's a process issue. I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bauer. Would agree with that, what you just said, so. Vice President Green, do you have any questions?
I think kind of some of the comments that I would have had were already stated, so there's no need for me to go into it further. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Davis, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. I think I'll re, I'll reserve my questions until after we get a chance to review the project. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, if we could set up some time to review the project. I know this is what council was asking for. I believe they might have asked for a few things to be emailed. If I forgot what that may be, does anybody want to reiterate so I don't miss it? I thought somebody, well, you wanted to, I think President Bowers, you were, you read, Ms. Reinhardt read off the rubric. Did you want that emailed?
Yes, I would like to see it.
Okay, thank you. I think my just small reservation, I, first of all, Alexandra and co., I think that you're a great company. I know you're going to be doing the Senator Stadium. So it's not that we feel like you do not do quality work. I think some reservations are that, and you may not know of this, but when the federal building went up, when the new courthouse went up, residents had some feelings and concerns because we weren't a part of it. No RFPs or bids, however we want to say the words, that went out included anybody in our community. No disadvantaged business, businesses were included. We were left out, but it's in our community. So we can't allow that to happen again. We saw how it felt. We saw the aftermath. So what we want to make sure is that the Broad Street Market that we've all went to, grew up with, we have a seat at the table. And that any company that comes in and whoever's going to restore that and preserve it, does it with us hand in hand. So I think that's where our reservation comes from. And it just kind of was, you know, you already have the Senator Stadium, now the Broad Street Market. So, you know, how does that work? That's two really large projects where we're not a part of. So, yeah, if we could just get some information, I will not be putting this on the legislative agenda for the next meeting. Although I know we want the Broad Street Market done. We're ready for it to up and go. But I think that we have to make sure we're doing this the right way. I have one last question though. And Neil, you may be able to answer this in a legal way, when, or you may too, Mr. Baker. The team that is formed to go over the, the scorings or go over the interviews and do the scoring system, is it allowed to be anyone? Do they have to be a city employee? And I ask that because the vendors who were affected in that, in the brown, the brownstone of the Broad Street Market, the brick building, would they be allowed to be on the team since, because I know you said, Mr. Baker, you put people on the team who have direct knowledge of whatever the project is, which they would have direct knowledge. They were affected. They know what they need. They know what kind of company they're looking for. Is that, would that be allowed?
So every one of these is unique, but there's not a prohibition to have non-city employees on there. You have to, as the responsible person with having insurance, have our people there. They have to be part of it. But at the end of the day, those appointments are simply an executive function. It's up to a mayor in this form of government to, to assign people to take care of these things, whether they, she asks them or requests them. It's much easier to assign someone who works for you than assign someone who doesn't. That very pragmatic piece, that's all.
Right, right. But if you, but also if you're trying to make, I'm, you know, and this isn't towards you or anyone really directly. But just to say, I just wanted to see, you know, if you were able to have non-city members.
And we absolutely have on some things. So it just, it just depended on the project. I can't, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot on the plate right now that's large. And, and I think that's part of why, when it's large, you just go with what, who's here.
Right. Okay, thank you. I hope moving forward, we can change up our, the teams that do do the scoring system. I think they've been the same for the past couple of projects. And I think also making sure we're placing people on there that it also directly affects.
I have a question though. What was the process prior to this scoring system? When, how did you select the people that, that bid, or this scoring system was always in place?
The very similar scoring system has been around for years. I mean, there's a little variation, whether it's a road project or something else. But for Harrisburg, I mean, you're seeing back-to-back two of the largest projects we've had in a dozen years, right? There just aren't a lot of giant multimillion-dollar projects here.
Which one are you referring to?
The stadium and the Broad Street Market. I mean, there just aren't multi, there aren't big projects like that coming through city government.
I'm speaking to, I'm following up with the sentiments that Councilwoman Rawls had. $396 million project in the heart of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Not one local vendor, not even a gopher, got a job here. 300, yeah, $396 million project. Not one person. And we had to march around this building, still didn't get a job. So the concern is, like, you know, again, no disrespect to your company, when you keep seeing the same people getting these projects, I gotta start thinking about why are they the only ones getting them? And our job is to stand vanguard for this community and sure, and it's something that I completely ran on to make sure that local vendors and businesses are included in the economic growth of the city of Harrisburg. So that's, that's just my concern of just seeing this process, how it actually works so that we know that there really isn't, I would just call it favoritism.
Alright, I'm gonna speak now.
Speak up.
I think, listening to what you guys are concerned, I share this sentiment 100%, okay? Being as a minority myself in the construction industry, majority of the time, there's not another person that looks like me. Alright, I've been in the industry for, going on for 10 years. Alright, I've only, I've only met one other black project manager, and that was in the city of Philadelphia. And that's working here in the state of PA. So I understand your sentiment. But what I would ask, add to that is that you guys are 100% right. That's a process and that's a procedure that is incorrect. And a lot of it comes down to educational. What you guys asking or expecting is for people to have opportunities at the table. But they, many of us lack the education. I'm gonna say us, because I'm one of those individuals there. As the person who has owned a business, who has worked in the construction industry here, I don't necessarily have the opportunity to bid on a project this large. Give me a real home, oh, I can do it. Give me a fit out, a million dollars, sure, I can do it. But we're talking about something that is, you know, eight, 10, 15, 20. I don't know what the dollar value of this project would be. But that requires a different level of education and experience that a lot of us just don't have. And so while we want this to happen, I think we gotta go back and go, how can we start educating the community far fewer in advance so when opportunities like this show up here, like this is something that's like a year, two, three years in the works. It takes time to do. I'm right there with you guys. I, I understand. I understand it. And it hurts to even hear that a $250 million project.
Oh, 396.
I don't care if it's over a million dollars. Like, the fact that no one had opportunity to sit at the table and it's plenty of contractors here, like, I feel that. I feel that.
That particular job was, was awarded to a firm in Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh, and they brought their own team.
And they brought their own team, and we were just as frustrated about that because literally we could have walked to that site from our office and we had a plan that was all-inclusive. And again, we didn't get a crack at it and it upset us, but...
And, and, and so if you, if you can feel that sentiment, right? How do you think some of these other companies would feel too, that they didn't really get an opportunity? And, and again, you guys were just before us.
I would say, I would say that they got an opportunity. We all had to go to the pre-bid. We all had the same requirements in the RFP which I brought.
So that's why I want to learn the system.
So, so we have...
I need to learn that.
We got the RFP. I mean, I brought, I brought it all tonight. We brought the RFP that was sent. There were certain guidelines that had to go by the RFP to make sure you were a responsive bidder. We put together a...
So you, you were a part of the grading?
No, no, no. I was part of providing a proposal. And we put together a proposal.
Did you see the other proposals?
No.
So this is really be the first time they'd be available to someone outside. That's how that works, like, you know.
So, so what he's saying to me though, I, I hear you, Neil, but what he's saying to me is that this is, you feel as though that you were the best qualified, pretty much is what you're saying, right?
I think we offered more than other...
How, if you haven't seen the other ones?
I know, I know a lot of these firms are, I know Jonathan Bowers...
That doesn't mean anything. So, so you brought Jonathan Bowers. He's in the building right now. This man has just been awarded three times in one year for the work he's done. He's done plenty of work in the city of Harrisburg. So, he, 185?
No, no, I said, I know Jonathan Bowers. You asked me how I, I know Jonathan Bowers. He doesn't have a restaurant... No, no, I said, I, I know Jonathan Bowers. I, you asked me how I, I know Jonathan Bowers. He doesn't have a restoration, a fire restoration group, and, and doesn't do a lot of that type of historical work. Same with.
So you can't, I see he has, he, he's, he can sub, can't he?
I'm just saying.
I have two questions. I wanted to know, how do we define most responsible bidder? Mr. Baker, that's what you refer to this company as, the most responsible bidder, and that we would get the most bang for our buck. Is there a definition for most responsible bidder?
I would say the definition I would use would be a bidder that meets the qualifications that we're looking for in the certain criteria that we're asking. So whenever we put that RFP out, and we say we're looking for all these different criteria, we wanna see, you know, X, Y, and Z, we, we look for specific items, and then when we get those proposals back, that's how we grade off of the proposals, and that's how we decide who the most responsible bidder is.
Ms. Reinhardt, I see you shaking your head. Are you confirming that there is a actual definition for most responsible bidder? Or you're just affirming what Mr. Baker is saying, that his hypothetical definition?
I, I, just to clarify, that would be my definition.
I know it's your definition. That's why I'm asking if, no, not Webster's dictionary, something in the rubric, something in, what is defined, what is, how is a, the most responsible bidder defined?
So I don't know if there's a very specific legal definition, but the way that we defined it for this team, for the scoring team, was how well the proposals met the criteria that were listed in the RFP.
Okay, and then I had a comment for Mr. Davis. I found some of your commentary a little offensive. Let's not assume that everyone lacks education. In this instance, it's a lack of opportunity. It's not the education, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Does any other council members have any other questions?
If my mic's not on, any questions or concerns? Okay, well, does, does anybody else have anything else to say from administration or Alexandra and Co.?
Thank you for the opportunity to present them.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for coming. That concludes the business of the Parks and Recreation Enrichment Committee.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to resume the legislative session.
Motion moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. So we return to the session. Before us, we had Resolution 26 of 2024, but I believe Chair Rawls noted she would like the resolution to remain in committee at this time.
I, you know, I did, but you know, what's the process if it remains in committee?
It just comes back to another work session. You can bring it out anytime. Some, some things remain in committee a year and a half, depending on the complexity of it, right?
All right, I, I will do that, because I feel like my, my council members need some time to look at some documents, and then I'll converse with them and have it brought back in.
And if, and Tiffany from my office participated in the legal side of these.
Oh, okay.
So if you need her available to walk people through things.
She can do that. Okay.
You too, right?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I assigned her this, this contract.
Thank you.
I, I'm bouncing off, but she's in the weeds.
Okay.
Right? That has to work, work here with language, right? No, no, on the documents, I meant that. That's what our office is working on, the language of the document, right? That's what we're trying to get to.
I got you.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any old business council members?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. I'd like to make a motion to revisit Resolution 22 dash 2024.
It's reconsider.
Reconsider Resolution 22 dash 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to reconsider Resolution 22 of 2024. Council members, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Oh. No, I don't have a question.
Okay.
I just misread the resolution and want to, yes, re-vote.
Cash your vote over?
Please.
Okay, so we have Resolution 22, 2024. Mr. Truesdale, could you read it just to refresh everybody's memory?
Resolution 22, 2024, a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of developing a natural greenscape park to be known as Wataras Street Park.
Thank you. Assuming there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, Mr. Truesdale, can you please call the vote?
On the motion to reconsider, which is not.
Motion to reconsider.
Yeah, on, on the motion to reconsider, yes.
Oh, okay. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 2024 passes by a vote of five.
Nope, the motion to reconsider has passed.
Oh, the motion to reconsider has passed.
Now, we can call it for a formal vote. Resolution 22 of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 2024 passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any new business council members?
Yes, I was typing away. Yes, very quickly, I would like to go over, um, some things happening in Harrisburg this weekend, or Thursday to Sunday and on. So what's happening in Harrisburg are families, singles, and couples. Earth Day Festival Saturday, April the 20th, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM at Reservoir Park Brownstone. There will be info tables, educational sessions, beekeepers, and crafts, so please come out and join us on Saturday, April the 20th. Also, don't forget that, um, the Parks and Recreation is still holding watercolor painting class, and that ends April 25th, and that is at the Reservoir Park Brownstone from Wednesday, um, on Wednesdays from 11:00 AM to 20, to 12:00 PM, so please don't miss out. Also, Extreme Hip-Hop Thursdays is still happening. It started April 11th, and it ends May 9th, and it will be at the Reservoir Park Pavilion from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. So please don't miss out on all the great activities that are happening right now in the city. If you would like more information, you can visit harrisburg.gov or harrisburgpa.gov for the flyers and for any more information that you may need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing and hearing none, the time is 7:39 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.